Whenever you're ready.
Good evening and welcome to our city council meeting for Monday, July 20th. I will now call this meeting into order with a roll call from Madam Clerk.
Miller.
Here.
DeBoer.
Here.
Cruz.
Here.
Harding.
Here.
Dara.
Here.
Sires.
Here.
Tiber.
Here.
All members present, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I'll note also that this meeting is being held electronically to protect against the spread of COVID-19 in accordance with the Iowa Public Information Board's requirements. So also before beginning, I'd like to note the passing recently of Stan Smith. He was a longtime city council member, I believe 24 years, serving our city. And for that reason, I would like to just have a moment of silence. Thank you. Moving into the approval of minutes, is there a motion to approve our regular meeting of July 6?
A motion.
Second.
The motion is seconded, any council discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? That passes. Madam Clerk, do we have any agenda revisions tonight?
Mayor, I have no agenda revisions.
Thank you, ma'am. First in our special order of business is a continuation of the public hearing on proposed rezoning of R1 Residential District and A1 Agricultural District to RP Planned Residence District, a property located east of Union Road and north of West 27th Street. Do we need a motion to continue? Leave that first to Rogers. I believe we have no need for a motion to continue. Moving into staff comments, Karen Howard, do we have an update or a change from last meeting? So you're on mute currently? There you are.
Evening. I do have an update and I do have some slides to show you, just to refresh your memory about this rezoning, because it is a large rezoning. So if you don't mind, with your permission, Mr. Mayor, I would share my screen.
Okay, and do you see a share screen option?
Yes, I'll.
Okay, go ahead.
Does everyone see my screen?
Yes, perfect.
Okay. Just to remind the council and anyone watching the meeting, this is a rezoning request for the West Fork Crossing Development. It's located at the corner of Union Road and West 27th Street. This is a proposed rezoning to RP Planned Residence District, and this district is a district that's more of a planned development. It allows flexibility in lot sizes and dimensional standards, but in accordance with the master plan. That's what was proposed by the developer of this area. Just some highlights of that master plan that was submitted by the developer. They proposed to build single-family detached homes on a range of lot sizes. They are not proposing any other uses for this area. They are planning several stormwater management basins to manage the stormwater in this large area. And they've also proposed a three-acre park in the central part of this to serve approximately 500 homes that will be built here. One of the important parts of this master plan is the street and trail connectivity. Intersecting streets are approximately 600 feet apart. The streets are stubbed, as you can see here on this master plan, two of the property boundaries on the west and the east and south and the north to allow for extension in the future to adjoining properties to allow for additional development in the future. You can see here, highlighted in the yellow circles here, the connection to the existing Lexington Heights neighborhood via Waterbury Drive and Cross Creek Drive. And also, there's a planned connection, driveway connection to the site of the future high school in the southeast corner of this master planned area. There are trails planned along Union and West 27th Street and six-foot sidewalks to provide for good walking and biking routes. Probably the most critical thing about the master plan that was proposed and discussed at the Planning and Zoning Commission is this development phasing. As we know, this is really important to get those critical street connections so that there's good traffic circulation in new neighborhoods so that people that build their houses there can get to those important community destinations. So as you can see on the screen here, you see these numbered areas, these colored areas. They're proposed to be work areas, what they're calling work area. And these would be the phasing of the development over time. So you can see work area number one would provide that street connection from Waterbury to Union Road. Now, you can see that it's not a continuous straight connection from Waterbury over to Union Road. There was quite a bit of discussion that we had with the developer over the last year about the importance of that connection, and this was a compromise to help to slow the traffic, to have this little sort of a roundabout way to get over to Union Road, but we felt that was a good compromise. But certainly, there could be a possibility for more direct route. Work area number two then is expansion to the south from area one. And then work area three is down in the southeast corner, starting from the lower end of the development. Now, I would note that the southern portion of this property has to be sewed. The sewer connection has to be provided from the south. And so in order to develop the southern half of this, that's why I believe that the developer is proposing to move down to that southeast corner to pick up the sewer connection that would be coming, brought to the Cedar Falls school site. And then the work area number four would complete that north-south route. So you can see here, the two critical routes that we're talking about is this Waterbury to Union Road connection. And then the north-south route, you can see here through phase two, three, and four.
Mayor, I'm sorry to interrupt, but I lost your screen. Am I the only one?
Yeah, the rest can see us. At least I can see it okay.
So work area number five then is another possible connection, north-south connection through, from phase two then, down to West 27th Street. And then phases six and seven are the remainder of the subdivision. Those street connections are not so as critical. Those are more local street connections. The critical ones are the ones that you see highlighted on the screen here. And so those really need to occur first. So one of the provisions and the discussion points at the Planning and Zoning Commission was a recommendation for a condition that there be at least one continuous street connection from work area number two in yellow here to West 27th Street within one year of the high school opening. The high schools is planned, anticipated to open in fall of 2024. So that would mean that the required connection would need to be made by the fall of 2025, so five years from now. Now, there could be some possibility for the developer to phase this so those street connections occur first. And of course, number five could occur before number three and four, and staff would be fine with that as long as that north-south connection was made. So there's a number of different ways that the developer could develop this land and phase it so that these connections could be made in a timely manner. So at the Planning and Zoning Commission on May 27th, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of this rezoning subject to the master plan and the development phasing plan and other development conditions outlined in the staff report. Staff, like we talked about at the last meeting, drafted a development agreement which formalizes those conditions that were outlined at the Planning and Zoning Commission. And, but at the public hearing, as you recall, on July 6th, the developer indicated that he was unwilling to commit to the requirement that the critical north-south street connection to West 27th be constructed within one year of the high school opening. He has indicated that he's unwilling to commit to any timetable and has not responded to staff's request for an alternative solution, at least so far. I would also note that if the master plan or the conditions proposed are substantially different than what was discussed at the Planning and Zoning Commission, this item will likely need to be sent back to Planning and Zoning Commission for further discussion. I would be happy to entertain any questions that you might have.
Okay, thank you very much, Ms. Howard. And as we do that into staff comments, we would, in a public hearing, we would normally go into public comments, and we're still in the public hearing. So if council doesn't object, I'd like to continue on with the public hearing part of this through public comments. And I see no objection there from council. So looking at the public comment side, I see there's a few hands up, and I would like to call on 0467. So name an address for the record, please.
Jim Skane, 2215 Clay Street.
Go ahead, Mr. Skane.
Yes. This is a very extensive project. And what, I have two questions that are really critical. One is, what is the projected cost of this first phase? And two, which of the structures that will be built, the streets and the like, will be financed by the city of Cedar Falls?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Skane. And we can address that in a few moments. I do want to continue on with the public comment part. So does anyone else have a comment within public comment? Okay, we will get to those questions. So seeing no others.
One.
Okay, I see. Mr. Verivin, please, go ahead, sir. Name an address for the record, please.
Yep, Timberhand, 4818 Briarwood. Also the engineer for the project. Just a couple of things I wanted to mention. From an infrastructure standpoint, phase five doesn't really make sense to move ahead of three or four. All of the infrastructure is coming from town, so the east part of the project, it's about a core mile stretch to get from phase three over to phase five. So there's obviously some substantial cost to do that, which is why the phasing was set up in the manner that it is. And then, as Karen alluded to, there's two drainage districts that separate the sanitary sewer, so the channel that we're preserving is essentially the brake line for the north part, and then everything south of that would actually go to a separate system. So not, not as simple as just saying it can be done in a certain order. I just wanted to point that out and make that clear.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Verivin. And as we look, before going into the next section, yes. Mr. Skane, you've already had your opportunity to speak on this item. So as I go back into the question here for continuance, is there a preference from staff about doing a continuance to the next week? Or is there any recommendation there?
I think if the council has questions about this, I think it's open for discussion at the moment. But if the council would like to continue the hearing, that would be our recommendation.
Okay, and then that gives me a question for Kevin. Typically, we close the public hearing after public comments. And so in this case, if I close the public hearing now, or deem it closed, does that limit us for the continuance of the public hearing for next week, or next time?
I would say that it would be best not to close the hearing and take up discussion among council to determine if it's going to be continued.
Okay.
Because that would limit our ability to hear public comments if the hearing were continued to close it.
Okay, so I will not close the public hearing then, and instead, I'll entertain council questions. And I do want to answer Mr. Skane's questions, or have those answered for what we can. Looking at question one was the projected cost of first phase. And question two was which of the items or structures within that first phase were going to be public expenditures? Or do we, can we provide any answer on that?
None of the infrastructure within the subdivision would be a public expenditure. Responsibility to build the infrastructure by the developer is typical for a residential subdivision. With regard to question number one, that would really be more of a question for the developer as the city doesn't have, are not privy to those costs.
Certainly, yeah. So that would, for the speaker, that would be information to attempt to gain from the developer directly. So now, open it up to council for questions or comments. Mr. Mayor. Ms. DeBir, go ahead.
Karen, I was wondering if you could explain for the public listening, most of this is zone currently R1 and some of it's A1, but this rezoning to RP. So there's all going to be single-family homes. Can you explain what the differences are, or what the benefits might be to the rezoning of, to RP?
The RP zone allows for some flexibility in the lot sizes and the dimensional standards for the lots. So it allows the developer to mix the lot sizes. So for example, can go down to 6,000 square feet for a single-family detached. And then, of course, can mix and match those throughout the development. So it does allow quite a bit more flexibility. It's more like a planned development. And sort of in return for that, the idea is that you have a more developed master plan so there can be some assurance to the community that the important aspects of this are followed through with.
Okay, thank you.
And next question?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Councilor Cruz, go ahead.
Yes, thank you. Looking at the definition for the RP, I see that it includes all of the items that can be built in R1, R2, R3, R4. It also allows up to 15% commercial C1 space to potentially be included. And I have a big concern with that because of, you know, subdivisions in the past, my experience changing as they go into the future. And from what I could see, going to an R2 designation would accomplish the 6,000-foot square lot that seems to be desired. So I guess, looking at it the way it sits right now, I'd be opposed to going all the way to the RP Planned Residential District for that very reason.
Okay, thank you, Councilor Cruz. Any questions? Yes, Councilmember Beller, go ahead.
To go off on Mr. Cruz's point, to Karen, did P&amp;Z have a discussion about that side of this with the RP designation allowing for different uses?
So the RP district does allow for different uses, but the developer needs to identify what the intention is here with the master plan. So that's where the development agreement comes in. They've identified in the master plan that there's no intention to build anything other than single-family detached homes here. Those questions were asked to the developer early on in the process if they wanted to mix uses or housing types, and their decision was no. So the development agreement would basically impose that condition on this, on this, with the master plan. So in order to change that, if in the future there was any desire to have different mix of uses, the developer would have to come back through the Planning and Zoning Commission and the city council through the same process to amend this master plan, to indicate. And so there'd be another chance for public input at the Planning and Zoning Commission and city council. That would be similar to what just occurred, for example, for the Arbor subdivision, where they had to come back to the Planning and Zoning Commission and city council to amend their RP plan to allow those duplex lots, for example.
If I may, Mayor.
Certainly.
Karen, as well, regarding the north and south connection, you haven't, since the last meeting, there hasn't been any discussion with the developer regarding an alternative or any options with that?
We opened up the communication with the developer's attorney and offered to have a discussion about any alternative proposals that they might have, but we have not heard back from them on an alternative proposal or to meet the same condition. And I would just note that we're concerned about this. As you know, we're having difficulties in other parts of town with critical street connections. And so we feel pretty strongly that we need to have some sort of timetable for these critical connections.
Thank you.
Another question for the conference. Yes, go ahead.
Shouldn't we, shouldn't we wait then to have an appropriate timetable for all of this stuff? And it's not quite complete then? Is that what I'm hearing? From Karen?
Yes, that's what we would suggest is that you either continue the public hearing. We would suggest you continue the public hearing so there's another opportunity, at least another opportunity. And then in a few weeks, if we still haven't gotten any movement on this, the council can decide whether they want to table this or send it back to the Planning and Zoning Commission, or have some sort of other alternative.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor. Yes, Councilmember Dara. So Karen, between now and whenever we have the next hearing, what needs to happen? We're going to have a discussion with the developer about, is it mostly finishing the road? Or who's going to be responsible for building and paying for that, that road five years before it's needed? I mean, is that really what, kind of what the concern is?
Well, I think there is a concern about the timetable. This has been discussed since, you know, since April with the developer, this timetable and the ability to control, at least having those connections made on some timetable. What was decided at the time was within, you know, basically within five years. So if there needs to be some other timetable or some other mechanism that we can come up with to control those critical connections, we're open to those suggestions.
So that's what the discussion will be between now and the next time that, when we continue the hearing, probably? Is that the thing that needs to be answered? Is that basically it?
Yeah, we would be hopeful that that question could be answered.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Tiber.
So I'm just comparing this right now to the comprehensive plan. And the plan right now, the future land use plan, does call for medium-density residential along 27th, then it phases into lower-density residential. I can appreciate the need and the desire to have, you know, a north-south connection, but, you know, if we're accomplishing an east-west connection on the north side of the development as well as, you know, better connectivity on the south side, I guess I, you know, I can somewhat appreciate the developer's concern about setting arbitrary timetables, which will require, you know, a higher outlay of investment over time. I think the main reason why we want two points of entry is for safety reasons so we don't incur another situation like the Meadows. And I think as long as, you know, there is flow, either east-west or, you know, decent flow around the high school, I guess I'm satisfied. So I want to be careful about pushing developers to make investments. This is a big undertaking and, you know, having some faith in, I guess, their ability to run a large-scale project is something I'm sure we don't test.
Okay, thank you. On note too, we still are in public comment, did not close the hearing. And I did see that Brent Dastrum had his hand up. And if council doesn't object- And if council doesn't eject as, as one of the key developers, I'd be interested in hearing what he has to say on this. So no objections, then, Mr. Dastrum, go ahead, sir.
Mayor, council, thank you very much, appreciate the time tonight. Just wanted to, the note that Karen put up said that we were unable to reach. I was told today that my council spoke with Ron Gaines on Friday and had a productive conversation, and we're going to continue that conversation this week. So I just wanted to make sure that did happen or maybe I got misinformation regarding that, because I don't want to be seen as someone that doesn't want to have this discussion. Number two, the question I've asked of city staff is, has any timeline ever been put on or demanded of a developer of a residential subdivision in the past or, and at any point in Cedar Falls history? Something that to date, they said they, they don't know of, and, and then why would I be the first one? So excited about this. It's, it's, it's a really large subdivision. I believe it's the largest subdivision in Cedar Falls history. And so it really concerns me in light of the economic times that we're in to put a timeline on $5 million of roads with no guarantee of sales of any lots. So hopeful that council and city staff can come together on an agreement, but I'm going to stay out of those negotiations. But a couple of questions that hopefully you can answer tonight.
I think, Mr. Dastrum. For staff, would there be a response on that?
So Mayor, maybe I can jump in here. I did have a conversation with Eric Johnson last week, which is, I believe, Mr. Dastrum's counsel on this. And the conversation really was on Prairie Winds and Prairie West where we've got some deficiencies with road connections in there. That was the primary discussion. There were a little ancillary discussions with regard to this 177 acres, but really the focus was on, on solutions to, to Prairie Winds and Prairie West that we had a conversation on earlier in the week with Mr. Dastrum, Ms. DeBoer, and with Stephanie Sheets.
Thank you. So that leads us, if there are no questions or comments continuing from council, I would entertain a motion if desired to continue this to our next council meeting.
I'll make a motion to continue.
Okay, so Councilmember makes the motion, and is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, second from Harding. And question, is this just a voice vote? Okay, so all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? That passes, so we will continue this for our next council meeting. Thank you. That brings us into old business. That is number three, pass ordinance 2967 vacating certain public right-of-way along Prairie Parkway upon its third and final consideration. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
The motion is seconded. Any questions from council? From the public? Okay, Mr. Skane, go ahead, sir.
Yes, when this was first discussed, there was questions about both cost, the value of the land being given up, and who would benefit by having this done. And I don't think those questions have ever been answered.
Thank you, Mr. Skane. I believe it came up in our first reading of this about who was receiving the use of the property and if there was any, any transactional value to that. Director Sheets, would you want to comment on that?
Yes, either myself or Karen, but this step is about considering whether the right-of-way is necessary for any city purposes or not. And then there's the next step about the value of the property and whether to sell it. So I think we do have at the end of the agenda, setting the hearing on that matter, so we'll be getting to that.
Okay, terrific. So if you're interested in that cost, then that will be at our next meeting, we'll discuss it. So any other questions or comments from council? Then this, it's been motioned and seconded, and this requires a roll call vote.
Miller?
Aye.
DeBoer?
Aye.
Cruz?
Aye.
Harding?
Aye.
Dara?
Aye.
Sires?
Aye.
Tyber?
Aye.
All voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Then that brings us to item four, which is pass ordinance 2968 amending Chapter Two, Administration of the Code of Ordinances Relative to Establishing a Human Resources Division Within the Department of Finance and Business Operations Upon Its Second Consideration. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
The motion is seconded. Any questions from council? From the public? Then this, it's been motioned, seconded, and requires a roll call vote.
Miller?
Aye.
DeBoer?
Aye.
Cruz?
Aye.
Harding?
Aye.
Dara?
Aye.
Sires?
Aye.
Tyber?
Aye.
All voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. That brings us to new business, which, the first is the consent calendar, and that's items five through 11. Does any council member wish to pull any items five to 11? Seeing none. Does anyone from the public wish to pull items five to 11? Mr. Skane, go ahead, sir.
Yes, I would like to pull number eight, please.
Okay. So eight. Thank you, Mr. Skane. And seeing none others, then I'll go ahead and read items five through 11. Item five is receiving and filing a proclamation recognizing August 2020 as gastroparesis awareness month. And I'll just note that I'll be doing an interview with the organizer of that on Wednesday, and that'll be posted to social media for us to understand a little bit more about gastroparesis. Item six is receiving and filing resignation of Lisa Thomas as a member of the Human Rights Commission effective July 1st, 2020. Item seven is approving various recommendations to the mayor, of the mayor relative to appointment of members to boards and commissions. Item nine is receiving and filing communications from the Civil Service Commission relative to certified lists for various positions. Item 10 is approving the application of Dragon's Gate for tobacco nicotine vapor permit. And then item 11 is the application for beer and liquor licenses for various establishments. So is there a motion to approve those items minus eight?
So moved.
The motion is seconded. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Those pass, which brings us back to item eight. Receive and file the committee of the whole minutes of July 6, 2020 relative to the following items. Update on potential pool partnership, urban chickens and ducks, and bills and payroll. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Seconded. Any questions from council on this item? Then questions from the public? Go ahead, Mr. Skane.
Yes, I'd like to know what the minutes say on this about the potential pool partnership and also what they say about bills and payroll, because it's always amazed me that bills and payroll is ever on the agenda, and it's never been really discussed. But it seems that this potential peer pool partnership, since it's going to be in connection with the new, new high school building, and since the school board has upwards of $112 million to complete the project, it is really strange that there would be this pool partnership, especially since one of the pools that people have access to, Pete, they talked about having it be closed, which limits the access of people in that part of town to the benefits of the pool. But it, the idea of a pool partnership didn't make sense, since it is a school project and the school board has.
Mr. Skane, I'm, Mr. Skane, I'm going to have to call a point of order for this because the minutes are a time to ask questions about this being entered into the record, not of being, not the contents of the items themselves.
Well, that, that, that's exactly what I'm talking about, though.
This, Mr. Skane, this is nothing what you're talking about. You're, if you have anything else related to having this, I'm going to call you out of order a second time. This is my meeting, sir. As the presiding official, I have to direct this and conduct this. And you're interrupting me, sir, and I'm calling you out a third time, and I'm going to restrict your comments the rest of the evening, sir. So what Mr. Skane had asked was having basically all of the minutes read for the pool partnership and for bills and payroll. Unless council objects, I'm going to disregard that because we have the minutes in the agenda for a reason. And if we allow this now, it's going to open it up to have these read at every meeting, completely disrupting the process. So are there any council objections moving forward without the reading? Seeing none. That brings us to approving. So is there a motion to approve?
We have.
Motion seconded. Motion is seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, that passes. And I apologize to the public for having to take that kind of an action, but this is very important to, to maintain order in these meetings, and we will do so. Next on our list is the resolution calendar, item, items 12 through 25. Does anyone from council wish to pull an item from 12 to 25? Seeing none. Does anyone from the public wish to pull an item from 12 to 25? That, I'll go ahead and read items 12 through 25 then. Item 12 is a resolution approving and authorizing execution of a natural services agreement with Silverstone Group relative to governing accounting standards board 75. Item 13 is a resolution approving and authorizing execution for an agreement of restoration services with Fisher Brothers relative to water slide maintenance. 14 is a resolution approving and authorizing revisions to the Housing Rehabilitation Manual for CDVG funding relative to the CARES Act. Item 15 is a resolution supporting a River Place term sheet, or excuse me, a River Place term sheet relative to a proposed amendment for private development. Item 16 is a resolution approving and authorizing expenditure of funds for the purchase of an electric extrication toolset for the Public Safety Department. 17 is a resolution approving and authorizing execution of an owner purchase agreement in conjunction with the Westford Street reconstruction project. Item 18 is a resolution approving and accepting completion of public improvements in Mayhill First Edition. Item 19 is a resolution approving the final plat of Mayhill First Edition. Item 20 is a resolution approving and filing the bids and approving and accepting the low bid of Aztec Corp. for the 2020 Seal Coat project. Item 21 is a resolution approving and accepting the contract and bond of Aztec Corp. for the 2020 Seal Coat project. 22 is a resolution of receiving and filing the bids and approving and accepting the low bid of Benton's Sand and Gravel for Clay Street Water Park Quality Improvement Projects. 23 is a resolution approving and accepting the contract and bond from Benton's Sand and Gravel for the Clay Street Water Improvement Projects. 24 is a resolution receiving and filing and setting August 3rd as the date of a public hearing on the proposed plan specifications form of contract and estimate of cost for the 2020 Sidewalk Assessment Project Zone 3. And then item 25 is a resolution setting August 3rd, 2020 as the date of public hearing on a proposed, proposal to convey a portion of vacated public right-of-way along Prairie Parkway. Is there a motion to approve these items?
So moved.
The motion is seconded? This requires a roll call vote.
Aye.
DeBoer?
Aye.
Cruz?
Aye.
Harding?
Aye.
Dara?
Aye.
Sires?
Aye.
Tyber?
Aye.
All voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Madam Clerk. Next item is item 26, allowing bills and payroll of July 20th, 2020. Is there a motion to approve? It's been motioned, seconded. Any discussion from council? From the public? Then this requires a roll call vote.
Miller?
Yes.
DeBoer?
Aye.
Cruz?
Aye.
Harding?
Aye.
Dara?
Aye.
Sires?
Aye.
Tyber?
Aye.
All voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Next we have opening for city council referrals. I saw no referrals in the packet. Does anyone have one to bring forward tonight? Okay, seeing none. Then moving to city council updates, I understand we have an update from Mr. Gaines and then also from Director Olson. So Mr. Gaines, would you like to go first?
Sorry about that, Mayor. I sure can. Just a real quick update on COVID. We still continue to work with our staff. Our human resources folks have been great about trying to keep up with the CDC's latest guidelines. Right now, throughout the course of, of this week anyway, as of today, we have four employees that are currently out with regard to positive tests with COVID or they're displaying some other symptoms with COVID. So we're moving forward with that. As, last week, as of the weekend, we were fortunate enough to have eight employees return from that, from COVID symptoms or testing positive or testing positive and two negative results. So anyway, I think for the most part, we're trying to keep going through this, and it's a little bit of a moving target every day, but for the most part, I think we're doing very well with our COVID stuff. So anyway, that's just a brief update. If there's any questions on it, be glad to answer any, any questions that we can.
Thank you. And then any questions about that from council?
Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Dara?
Not necessarily a question, but I was thinking, I had something I wanted to say during the council referrals, and I was thinking there was another opportunity. I just wanted, since Ron, if you don't mind, since Ron was talking about the staff, I just had a couple of comments about our staff. So, okay, since I missed my earlier opportunity.
We forgive you. Go ahead.
Thank you. Well, you might, hopefully you'll still forgive me after I make this speech here. We all got our copy of the summer Cedar Falls Current last week, and that magazine is full of programs and activities that, that various organizations and city departments are offering our residents. It additionally highlighted multiple projects happening throughout this city despite the ongoing limitations presented by COVID. I mention these things to remind ourselves as elected officials, but also the rest of the community, that great things are happening almost unnoticed in Cedar Falls, and it's easy for us to take these day-to-day services for granted. All during this, all during this COVID event, our garbage is picked up every day, books are checked out at the library, our streets and homes are protected, toilets flush every day, while most of the rest of us have had to make some form of alteration, alteration in our routines, yet the city functions every day. Over the fast, fast few months, it's been easy for some residents, elected officials and candidates to be critical or even call out our hardworking staff. I brought this up tonight to publicly acknowledge the great work that all the staff in every department does day in and day out. And I want our staff to know that most residents in this community appreciate, appreciate and respect the work they do. So for me and the majority of the community, the majority of the community, thanks to the city employees, including those in this meeting tonight, for coming to work every day, virus or no virus, and providing us with high-quality, dependable services. Thanks, thanks. I just needed to point out how hard our staff works.
Thanks, Kirk.
Thank you very much. Along with Mr. Gaines's comments, I did have some information from Director Olson he'd like to bring forward. So go ahead, Director Olson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If you recall about a month ago, I did a presentation concerning what our police department, what our Public Safety Department is doing to ensure that we don't have problems that have occurred in other departments throughout the nation. So I wanted to update you a little bit on what we've done since, since that meeting has occurred. So we've since put eight policies under review, and they will be receiving some changes. And some of those changes include addressing chokeholds, shooting from or at moving vehicles... addressing chokeholds, shooting from or at moving vehicles, de-escalation uh, um techniques, I guess you could say, in training, response resistance, use of force and that type of thing. So we're reviewing uh, eight policies um, currently. We've added one more step to our hiring process. So we currently have what's called uh, it's the MMPI, the Minnesota Multiphasic Personality Inventory. And that uh, addresses personality traits that an individual may have. We're adding to that another uh, personality assessment test um um, by critical hire. And that checks twenty-three personality traits. So we're gonna make sure we're hiring the right type of person uh, for this job to help us ensure we don't have problems with their personality beliefs in the future. We've also um, uh, looked at our training schedule and although our training schedule is put together at the beginning of every year and a lot of that training is mandated by the state, we do have um, several opportunities to um put in uh, some, I guess you could say voluntary training or training of choice. So we're gonna continue with our implicit bias training with Drake. We have two sessions remaining. COVID has delayed um, the phase two of that training or the second session, but that will be this fall. And then we'll schedule that third session in the spring. Uh, and then we're going to take a look at the ICU um, training to continue uh, at, once we've continued with the direct training. We also um, have been in contact with you. You might have uh, remember me mentioning the um company called Force Science. They're kind of the expert company in, in use of force and response to resistance. Um, we are looking for and have contacted them in reference to some train, the trainer de-escalation training they have. So we can send an officer there to become a certified trainer under use of force for, for de-escalation training purposes. And then I continue to be on the Citizen Advisory Committee which consists of um, individuals and officers from Waterloo and Blackout County. And our Assistant Chief Craig Birdy is attending uh, a Board of Supervisors, or I'm sorry, Blackout County Board of Health, a law enforcement dialogue with other law enforcement officials um, for a program titled Racism: A Public Health Crisis. So those are some of the things that we've been doing in the last month. And we'll continue working on these things in the, in the next few weeks.
Okay, thank you very much, Director Olson. Any questions on those items?
Mayor?
Uh, yes, Councilmember Miller, go ahead.
Several separate questions, actually. I thought at the last meeting, we had a discussion about the pool and potentially changing what we were doing there and the decision was gonna be made, I thought, within the next couple of weeks. Has anything changed with that or just looking for an update?
For the pool?
For the swing pool? Are you talking about attendance and ticket sales?
Exactly, yeah.
I, I think either Stephanie or Chris might jump in here.
Yeah, well, since Chris is on the line, maybe I'll ask if he wants to jump in with um, how we're approaching it in the past week.
I can get my unmute button to work. Can you hear me?
Perfect.
Um, attendance still seems to be about the same, uh, quite low for the number of passes that we had sold. Uh, we did open it up that if you had purchased a pool pass and wanted to um pay for friends to come in or family to come in, um, that would be uh, fine. Um, it's going less than what I expected it to be doing, so um I mean, our numbers are still down, but we're still, still providing the service to the people that, that uh purchased the pool passes this summer.
Mr.
We're averaging probably around twenty to fifty additional guests because of the um, guest passes that are permitted. We're really only in the first week. I think last week we had some interesting weather a couple of days, so it's maybe hard to tell. The pool will be open through August um, ninth at this point, so we have three weeks left in the season.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilperson Harding, go ahead.
Um, yeah, the season's getting short and I know these are tough times and, and I know it's tough decisions, but is there any way that we could get it open to where we could allow a certain amount of day passes to people? Uh, I know there are people that contact me constantly wishing that they could get a day pass and, and it seems to me that it would be feasible with the low numbers we've had to make maybe fifty or logistically make it available so that people can just purchase a, a day pass. Thoughts on that? Is that gonna be workable?
I think that's something that we could discuss internally. Again, like you said, um, the season is getting short here and we really weren't sure if we had um, a true test last week with how the friends and family addition goes, which still gives some priority to our season pass holders. But I think as we see how this week unfolds, we might consider if there's anything more that we do.
Is there, do we know, uh, have we sold six hundred season passes?
Well, um, I don't think that we've sold six hundred passes, but then when it's a family pass, I think we're somewhere around three or four hundred. I don't know off the top of my head for sure. But then if each family is somewhere around four members, then you could potentially be at capacity if you had people showing up at the same time.
Well, and the, the, it sounds like the problem or the concern has been uh, with the reduced count that's available or the reduced admission of people who can come in. Um, if we um, open it up to day passes as well, then that could potentially keep somebody who's bought a season pass from being able to enter. Is that correct?
Correct.
So then the follow-on question would just be, is that as much a concern now? Um, is it, is it worth the risk at this point for somebody who has a season pass to, to be denied entry for that day because there are day pass holders in? And that would be, I think, a question for counsel um, from a, a policy standpoint.
Mr. Mayor?
Uh, yes, Councilmember Cruz, go ahead.
I, I guess I'd have a, a question for uh, Stephanie or Chris. Who knows? How close have we gotten to the maximum capacity that we chose to have during this COVID? I, I, I can't imagine that many day passes coming in there and if people are asking about it continuously, let's try to accommodate them for a week and see what happens. Um you know, the facility is there, so if somebody could answer, how close have we gotten to our max?
Um, we probably hit about close to half of the max that we've um, put out there. So probably around, I think the highest was two hundred and two hundred and fifty at a single, uh, two hundred and fifty, two hundred and sixty at a single point.
And we, we wanted to limit it to six hundred?
Correct.
And then the capacity of the facility, it's how much, twelve hundred?
Correct.
So we're only one-fourth capacity, it sounds like? If not even, maybe?
Yes.
I, I would motion or ask that we consider day passes uh, pretty much as quick as we can. Um, giving our citizens the opportunity to enjoy the pool if they so choose, especially with hot weather.
And, and from my understanding, I, I don't think that this would need a motion necessarily, just it, it probably wouldn't be appropriate to do one at this point anyway, but just on a council consensus, um, if there's not objections to it, uh, counsel, it sounds, or it sounds like for staff, the the general consensus is wanting to proceed forward with that sooner rather than later. So just to note that.
Mr. Mayor?
Uh, yes, Councilperson Sires, go ahead.
Uh, wouldn't it be possible that up till one o'clock, you would have the season passes and then after that, it'd just be whoever came first and then you could just open it up the next four hundred people or three hundred, whatever was left? Couldn't we do that?
Facility opens at noon. It's open from noon to eight PM daily.
Okay. Well, then set it for a couple of hours later and then let everybody come in as a day pass, right up to, right up to the capacity. I'm for that.
I think that there are
I'm with you all. As soon as you can open it up for day passes.
Yeah, I, I think that there are some different options that we can talk about.
Mayor, I think, I, I think probably knowing that uh, uh knowing that the council's uh, wanting to open it up for day passes, I'd really like Chris and Bruce to kind of design how that looks. They really know the facility the best and, and uh, so come up with a plan and, and try to move that forward.
And also, it wasn't discussed, but there could be like a, a Monday, Wednesday, Friday is, is pass holders only, like family pass, Tuesday, Thursday could be day pass. So there's, there's quite a few uh, options there to make it equitable, as equitable as possible. So any other questions or comments you'd wanna add into that discussion, counsel? Okay, well, we've got a consensus to move forward on that. Um, anything else within staff updates uh, to cover tonight?
Mayor?
Uh, yes, Councilmember Miller, go ahead.
Uh, Director Olson, um, I was just wondering what the public safety building, public safety, how is everything going? I've heard some rumors as of late and I assume this is in regards to the election or something, that there's some type of a conspiracy to get rid of the remaining non-union firefighters? Some type of long-term plan that the city has? Can you speak to that?
Yeah, I, I certainly can. Uh, so I'm not a Facebooker, but uh, I've, I've had people approach me and say, hey, we've seen this um, this post or this rumor on Facebook. Uh, and that rumor that, that you just stated is that uh, there's a plan to remove the fire supervisors. And there is not a plan, there's been no discussion uh, to do that, so that, that Facebook post is false.
In regards to the general atmosphere of public safety, these guys are getting along, things are moving, things are, cooperation's happening?
Uh, yeah, very much so. In fact, uh, we had a very, very busy weekend and I actually received uh, notice from one of the um, firefighters uh, about the some of the advantages going back and forth between police being a help out fire and fire being help outs police. So it's, it's really helped out in some of the bigger calls.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Then seeing none, I will uh, then bring this over to public forum. Speakers will have one opportunity to speak for up to five minutes on topics germane to city business. Does anyone from the public wish to speak tonight? Okay, and I see Mr. Skane's hand. Uh, I will allow a comment for, for Mr. Skane this evening in public forum. Uh, go ahead, Mr. Skane.
Thank you very, very much. Uh, I was surprised that I got uh, ruled out of order and when I was not out of order, but that uh, is a matter for another day. Uh, I had a number of things that I wanted to talk to you about. One is that uh, uh there is still the misuse of the word germane and there should be uh, a removal of that from the public forum because the uh, the council shouldn't be able to uh, uh, censor uh, free speech. Now, if there was a disorder uh, or a matter of language or something like that, uh, there, there are, you know, clear provisions for um, ruling a person uh, out of order, but just stating an opinion, there's, there's nothing, nothing in the constitution that permits that. Secondly, uh, I uh, am uh, disturbed that uh, uh, the uh items uh, are still uh, not talked about individually as uh, the meeting law uh, stipulates. Those uh, items uh, that say approved on a single vote uh, without debate uh, not only violates uh, uh, chapters twenty-one and twenty-two, but they also contain fines uh, for the members of the council uh, for each uh, infraction. So it's, it's a serious matter. And uh, get uh, meeting after meeting on the agenda uh, that which is there. Uh, it, it would be a, a much better uh, uh, meeting for the uh, people i- if that uh, kind of thing uh, uh, did not uh appear and that each item was considered. Uh, because as happened tonight on one, the one item, uh, there was uh, some very good uh, discussion and uh, instead of rushing to approve, uh, there was the continuation of that meet, uh, that uh, uh, particular item. Then, and, and another thing that, that uh, bothers me is that uh, as we uh, go through this particular p- process, uh, there have been added at the end of the meeting with no public participation, uh, the uh, stat, uh, council referrals and council updates and, and staff updates. Uh, those items uh, do not belong as separate. They should be uh, earlier in the meeting. Uh, it would be wise for the uh, council to uh, have a uh, um, report section at the beginning. Then we can have uh, uh, department monthly reports. We can have all kinds of reports. We can have uh, city administrator reports. But having them where they are and what, what you have just been just talking about, uh, is completely wrong because it completely uh, prevents the people uh, from uh, being involved and therefore uh, they really are illegal. But I really believe that the council meetings should be the people's meetings and, and not uh, uh, just the uh, city staff. One, one question about uh, a, a item that was voted on tonight, uh, was the business of establishing a, a, a Human Rights Commission uh, under the uh, uh, agents of the uh, Business and Finance, Fin- Finance and Business uh, Division uh, with uh, Jennifer Rodenbeck. And uh, no matter how you think about it, it makes no sense uh, to uh, have that underneath there. I mean, uh, it's important enough, it should be uh, re- responding uh, to uh, a, an official like Mayor uh, or city administrator.
Yeah, Mr. Skane, I do have you at times, sir. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Um, so before uh, we have another person who wishes to speak in public comment and I will go to that now. Uh, that's fifty, our last four phone numbers, five-two-zero-nine. So go ahead, name an address for the record, please.
Hi there, Rick Sharp, sixteen twenty-three Burke Street, Cedar Falls. How you doing? So, basically, my statement is, is that I'm requesting that all the vehicles in the public safety department get rebranded with the public safety decals on them. Uh, we are more public safety now than we were when J. Cole rebranded the vehicles uh, decade or two ago. Basically, it's a part of the process in moving forward. Uh, I looked online, Kalamazoo actually has public safety decals on all their trucks and vehicles. And like I said, it's just part of the process moving on. It won't confuse the citizens or visitors that come to Cedar Falls. Uh, be proud of it, own it. Likewise, I, when I read articles, I hear from Director Olson and council members and various staffs, I'm asking you guys to use the correct verbiage for the employee titles. I've heard them called police officers or firefighters. Um, call them PSOs. That's who they are. There's nothing wrong with that. That's their true title. And actually have them refer to themselves as PSOs as well. Uh, when you don't do that, I wonder why, you know, if you're ashamed of it or what have you. Um, recently, I heard a PSO fire supervisor, when he's talking to someone else, actually call himself a captain of the police department. You know, so maybe some coaching with the employees themselves, but again, it confuses the citizens. You eliminated the firefighter job title. They're all public safety officers. Start, let's start referring to it that way, you know? Be proud of it and move on. And one final thing is as school starts, which is gonna be open to the students and go live, are the council meetings gonna go live too, as well as to the public? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sharp. So, looking for other speakers for public comment. Seeing none. Um, with uh, this, Ms. Sharp brings up a good question um, about the reopening of dates for having meetings in public um, or, or bring it back to the council chambers. Not made a decision on that yet. Uh, have been taking it under advisement from council members and from staff as well. Uh, I'm not gonna tie it to what happens with the school board's decisions and the openings of schools. I'm not going to tie it to what happens with the school board's decisions and the openings of schools. It's going to, because city buildings and our, I guess our property, our responsibility ties to city buildings themselves, right? And we're not connected to the school district. We're independent bodies, so I'll certainly take that under advisement, but just for expectations, it won't be based just on whatever the school decides it's able to do. The other part that I wanted to bring up too, just as a response for one of the previous speakers, was it happened last week as well, where it's claimed that we are holding illegal meetings because of the fact that our work sessions weren't open for public participation, that they couldn't speak during that, that public time. And I just want to make clear for those of you who are watching tonight, strongly encourage you to just Google Iowa Chapter 21. What's going to pop up is official meetings open to the public, and you can read along with what I've got here. It's just the first paragraph, and it is 21-1. It says, "This chapter seeks to assure through a requirement of open meetings of governmental bodies that the basis and rationale of government decisions, as well as those decisions themselves, are easily accessible to the people." And it seems like there's a misconception out there that accessible to the people means that this is, it's all a public forum, or it's all based like a town hall, and the public participates in it, which the open meetings law does not, doesn't state that. So, I certainly understand that for all of our work sessions, we need to have them announced at least 24 hours in advance, that the agenda needs to be posted, the public needs to have access and feel welcome to attend these meetings, and it should be in a place that's convenient and accessible to the public at a time that's convenient and accessible to the public. There's no requirement that the city records these meetings, and sometimes we don't, and especially in work sessions, because we want the opportunity to have some more informal dialogue and deliberation. But the public can certainly attend, and we have seats arranged so the public can view all the deliberation, and then also, they're allowed to record. Iowa Open's meeting law is clear that the public has to be allowed to record those meetings themselves if they prefer. So, through that, these are not illegal meetings by any stretch. We're following Iowa Code 21 very closely, and I take that seriously when there's a charge that I'm holding an illegal meeting. And then that last part, it comes up time and time again about germane, and that topics be germane to discussion. I tie back to Iowa Code 21.7, which is rules of conduct at meetings, and it says, "Nothing in this chapter shall prevent a governmental body from making and enforcing reasonable rules for the conduct of its meetings to assure that those meetings are orderly and free from interference or interruption by spectators." So, the reason we have germane is to ensure that questions or things that come up to council are related to city business, because that's what we're here for. It's, this isn't just a soapbox on a public square. This is a city council meeting. So, just wanted to make that clear for the public. If there are questions that we're doing something illegal or improper, please email me or call me to let me know, but I, it's my job to follow these very closely to make sure that we're doing what we're supposed to. So, with that said, that's the end of public comment, and I see no other hands up for public comment, so I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So, move.
Second.
The motion is seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you.
You.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Good week.
Happy Moon Day.